Thank you for tuning into Exeter TV. Exeter TV is the town's public and government access channels, available on Comcast Channels 6 and 22. Channel 6 is your channel. If you have an idea for a program, want to host your own talk show, or submit a film, we're here to get your content on television. On Channel 22, we bring you live and replay coverage of government meetings and other town updates. A third channel, Blue Hawk Media, is operated by SAU 16 and can be found on Channel 8, with all your school sports, events, and meetings. You can watch Exeter TV online at exeternh.tv, Apple TV, and on Roku. Find us on social media for extra content. Subscribe to our YouTube channel and hit the bell to get notified about live streams and new content. Tune into our platforms every other Friday to watch the Exeter Bi-Weekly Report, with recaps of recent events, updates from town departments, and messages from nonprofits in your area. If you head to our website, exeternh.tv, we invite you to sign up to our newsletter to receive monthly updates about new content, upcoming meetings, and more. We'd like to thank you for taking the time to watch Exeter TV and hope that you tune into our other content as well.
And welcome to the Extra Planning Board Meeting of Thursday, June 26, 2025, at 7:00 PM, in the Noack Room of the Town Office Building located at Front Street, Exeter, New Hampshire, to consider the following. And first, I'd like to introduce the Board. I'm Langdon Plummer. I'm Chair of the Board. And to my left...
Gwen English.
And...
Nancy Belanger.
Nancy is a...
Block Board Representative.
Representative. And next to me, I'm...
John Bruder.
Jen Martell.
Marty Kennedy.
Dean Hubbard.
Sam LaCloud.
And I know tonight's a discussion, but we will be making some decisions out of the minutes, so I'm going to... Because Aaron's not with us tonight, have Matt step in there and Dean take in the other Pete's chair. So alternate number three, we'll alternate. Thank you. I think to move things ahead, you good people waited a little while the other evening, so we've got minutes to deal with, and let's not waste your time. So I'm going to go with the application of Foss Motors for a design review of a proposal to demolish existing building located at 133 Port Smith Ave., and construct a new 36,500 square foot car dealership with expanded parking, vehicles bay area, and associated site improvements. Sub per se property is located in the C2 Highway Commercial Zoning District, Tax MAP Parcels Number 52-110, Number 52-111, and 52-112-2, Planning Board Case Number 25.4. I want to point out this is a meeting just to discuss. It's a informal kind of discussion. No votes are taken, no decisions are made. Basically, it's for the developer, or the applicant, let me say, in this case, to show what your thinking is, get kind of a feeling of how the Board reacts to it. And so I'm going to start off, because Dave is not with us this evening, but I'll read his notes of June 20th, which are pretty close to what was in the other packet, just updated a little bit. Applicant applied for design review of... This is a design review of a proposal for redevelopment of an existing Foss Motors car dealership located at the 133 Port Smith Avenue. The proposal includes the demolition of existing building and new construction of a 36,500 square foot car dealership with expanded parking, vehicle display area, and associated site improvements. Sub per se property located at the C2 Highway Commercial Zoning District and are identified as Tax MAP Marcellus 52 Parcels Number 52-110, 52-111, and 52-112-2. The applicant has submitted an application, preliminary site plans, and supporting documents dated 5/21/25 for year review. These materials were previously mailed and included in the 6/12/25 Meeting Packet. At the June 12th Meeting, June 12th, 2025 Meeting, the Board voted to continue discussion on this application to the June 26, 2025, given the discussion of the first agenda item was anticipated to extend beyond 10:00 PM, which we did till 10:30. Thank you so much. Please note that the only new... This is only a design review. Design review is covered under NHRSA 676:4. It allows the Planning Board and the applicant to engage in a non-binding discussion of the proposal. As this is design review, the... And the Butters have been notified, the Board can discuss matters beyond general and conceptual discussion, which can involve specific engineering details and design. Staff will provide a complete review through the technical review committee process, once the complete submission has been approved by the applicant, which they are well aware of. In the event the Board determines that the design review process is ended, I would suggest the Board make a determination with a vote. The Board determines additional review is needed, I would ask the Board table the item and tell it date certain. I have provided motions for both of yours, but this is addressed to the Board, convenience. So that's Dave's comments. You're here, we're here, so who's speaking first? This is nice, we don't have an attorney tonight.
Yeah, we do.
Oh, we do! Excuse me, sir!
No, I mean, no, here for you.
Let the applicant know the attorney was very promptly here before I got here, so a couple more shickles for him.
Good evening, and thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the Board, and of the public. For the record, my name is Bruce Scammon, for the Manual Engineering and James Verret and Associates. Here with me tonight is Tim Foss from Foss Motors, Tim Phoenix, and Doug...
Remore.
Remore, from Jewett Construction. We're here to discuss the renovations and revitalization of Foss Motors. It has been a great business here in town for many decades. For those of you that are looking at it, it's right here, it's next to the Hannafords and next to the old Sylvania driveway. As many of the Board members know, they came two years ago, it's three years ago.
Maybe in a year.
Last spring, yes. To put in a new building in this wooded area, right here, and put in a parking lot. There was a lot of pushback on the building, and they pulled that off with sort of the understanding that they needed more space and that they would be back to discuss that with you. So we have been through several iterations on how to renovate this building. This old... You can see the whitish part here was the original, it was built in the 50s and 60s. 63. This is an old concrete roof where it's pre-cast concrete that stretches over. We've done some analysis, trying to figure out whether we could go up above that and try to raise the building there. We have looked at putting building out of the back and extending the bays. Currently, there is only 12 service bays. They are drastically undersized for the expansions that they've done. As many of you may know, or heard on the radio or the television, they were the number one Jeep dealer in all of New England last year. So they're selling a lot more vehicles, you know, and they need to be able to grow, to be able to deal with the business that they have, and to service the vehicles that they've sold, and have it larger so that they can handle the business with hopeful growth in the future. So that all said, we've gone through several iterations to try to expand this building. One of them had the whole front for a showroom that expanded most of the front out here, which then left no room for cars, no room for expansion after that. So we've come up with the idea of trying to build... Oh, and if they build an addition, it seriously hampers the existing structure and the ability to operate through that. Construction, I'm sure Doug could tell you, takes 12 to 15 months, most car dealerships. Is that approximate?
We do it shorter than that.
Yeah. In a perfect world, it goes faster than that, but it's still probably nine months minimum. So if we looked at doing a series of additions, one on the back, and then one on the front, and then expand out the side, which would then stretch it into a series of two to three additions, which would then stretch it out over multi-years. But then you have construction on site, you have that hindering the car ability to operate and run as-is. So what we've come up with is the idea of building a new dealership. It's approximately the same location in the front. This is about where the front is, and we're going to stretch it all the way out back here, and then it comes right up next to the building, but allows that existing building to stay As part of this, this new building, to minimize the size of the building, to keep as much room for parking and storage and display vehicles, customers coming in, service vehicles, we are going to try to go three stories high. And it's a lot different. We would have a... An entrance that would come in off of the Sylvania Road down here, and have a basement or first floor showroom, and have a full basement underneath that could do, you know, washing cars or recon of vehicles. There could be some storage underneath. All of that could be done in the basement or first floor. The second floor would be at the elevation of the current showroom, and there, of course, would be showroom in the front, and then there'd be the maintenance... Well, parts and service right up would be in the middle, and then service would be out the back. We're planning to be able to go from 12 bays to 30 service bays. So this is a much larger area than what we have today. And then there would be a third story. They would have additional offices and usable space, possibly a little bit of showroom on the third story as well, with the ability to put cars up to the third story. So it's a big difference. But the exciting part is, is that they would be able to continue to operate in their existing footprint until this new building is built and up, and then you could demo the old building after that. So just for operations and the ability to stay here in this location, as some of you may know, this land goes back with the Foss family for three or four generations? Five generations, because it was the original Foss farm was here. They have a connection to this location, and they would like to stay here in Exeter and be able to expand here. The hurdle, and we started at the Conservation Commission first, is the rear area that's treated here would all basically need to be filled. There is a wetlands there. We've been to the conservation, we've discussed this. Let me move forward to an existing condition. So some of this, you probably may remember from the work for the parking lot down here, there's a man-made wetland that runs down along the side of Sylvania driveway, and then there is a waterway that comes... Swale that ditched that comes down behind their dealership. As we said, there's three lots here. This is Lot 110. This next one is Lot 111. And the lot that they got from the old Sylvania is here, is Lot... Was it 112-2, I believe? So there's the old waterway from when some of this was already previously man-made, that water has been directed to this location. At this point, right here, there's a culvert. Culvert's in green and runs across the property, and then daylights below the dam at the waterworks, and then goes down out to, eventually to the Squamscut River. We are proposing that we're going to make a large sand filter out of this whole area so that we can treat the water versus today, the water just runs off pretty much from both sides. There is a small detention pond here, but there's plenty of water that spills off. You can see the contours here. The water, you know, all basically runs off down into that. There's a high point in the parking lot, about here. All of this backwater flows down to here. Similarly, above us, there's water off the Hannaford that runs down into there. And if you follow this back, it goes back to the Route 101 drainage ponds that were put in between the old Route 51 bypass and Route 101, for those that recall that far back.
I recall.
Yes. So that was all rebuilt there off of Holland Way, or between Holland Way and Route 101. So that water overflows and then picks up water from industrial, commercial sites on both sides and comes down here, and then is piped down here. We're proposing to extend that pipe from here to here. So I believe it's an extra couple hundred feet of pipe. As you can tell, this is probably 400 to 500 feet, and this is probably, like I said, 200 to 300 feet here. We would... Let's go forward to a site plan. That's the existing... No, that's the proposed condition, sorry about that. So this area, as you can see, is the wetlands that would be filled as part of this project. The Butters have an easement for a pond here. We would take that water and do better treatment through our sand filter in our new sand filter that we proposed to build under the site in this location. We have a small detail. We haven't, you know, of course, worked it all out. This would be... Have to go to alteration of terrain, and this will help with reduction of nitrogen through this sand filter and a lot better treatment. We feel that currently, it's just water running over the surface where it can pick up silt. We will, through our sand filter, have that water much cleaner than it is today. As we discussed with the Conservation Commission previously, this is probably close to a million-dollar sand filter. It's not... And... Because everybody was saying, "Well, you're just getting this, and we're not getting anything back in return." But this is not a simple little thing that the Fosses are looking to undertake to be able to do this and improve the water quality. We would have a retaining wall here, fairly close to the property line. The driveway that's out back will be access to the lower level of the building and to the storage lot that was previously approved. We will have a driveway that comes up the back and be able to enter to the site up here. This will be in the central drive-in. This will be a drop-off for service. Then the service can then come through, once the old building is gone, and enter into the service bays, which is this whole rear of the building. There will be an exit here, so that the service bays will have two garage doors, in case one breaks or something like that. You always like to have two bays, bay doors, so that there could be a flow also, a natural flow through the service entrance. The rear of the lot will be storage and service parking. This would be the storage of extra vehicles. This would be... All the line spots are either service or visitors or employee parking. Everything else, it's just these semi, what I call rectangles, are display for vehicles as part of the dealership's display. I'd like to show you, there's some grading, contours. This is what we had originally looked at possibly needing. The 20,000-square-foot building that was going to be for storage. This was all going to be the addition for the service area. This was going to be the drive-in for the service drop-off, and this was going to be the addition for the inside display and sales area. Additionally, basically everything inside was going to have to be gutted and rebuilt to reallocate for different areas. So that is approximately, I believe it was 83,000 square feet? No, that was 73,000 square feet. This is taking our three footprints from our three levels and showing you how much space, if we had it at one story, we would need to use. This is the bio swale or large sand filter that we're proposing. So traditionally, the sand is approximately 16 to 18 inches thick. On a really thick one, it's 24 inches, and we're proposing to put an extra foot of sand in. We are also using large rock on the bottom layer so that the water coming down can also use that as a storage area to replicate flood storage underneath the whole parking lot. So the bottom seven feet or so will be extra storage. The top, we are proposing somewhere as around six or seven feet of stone, so that we can get more of the parking lot to gravity flow into it, so we can take more water than traditionally comes to this area and treat it. DES may, through the alteration of terrain, require what we call an ISR, which is an underground wetlands, and is a denitrification chamber. We haven't gone through that process yet, but we have space stored for it in case we need to do that. So it's approximately 20 feet deep is what we're going to be having for this sand filter that would be in the middle of the parking, under the parking lot, and maybe stretch under the building as well. We haven't done a full design yet, so this is just our initial preliminary design. With that said, unless anybody from the team has any thoughts, I'd like to get the Board's input and what they think and...
John's ready to go.
Excuse my ignorance, but the sand filter, what kind of maintenance does that require?
The maintenance really requires that you don't put... It's the pre-treatment before it takes maintenance. The sand filter itself doesn't take maintenance.
Lasts forever?
Yes, unless, you know, somebody goes in and dumps something in it that, you know, you dump, you know, I don't know...
Oil.
Oil?
Cars.
Actually, UNH has worked with hydrocarbons, and the sand filters, the bacteria break down oils and hydrocarbons. But if you had like a tar or something that was thick, that is not oil or...
It might have to be cleaned off from time to time.
No, it should not be, but I'm saying if somebody went in and sabotaged it, there is ways of ruining anything, you know?
And that doesn't drain directly into the reservoir? It's ahead of that, right?
No, it's below the reservoir. It's not...
In front of the dam.
None of this water is going to be going into the reservoir. Additionally, our office does almost 100% biofilters like this at this point, because what we're finding is, if you drove over and looked at the pond that's existing right here at the back of our property, it has not been maintained, which means that there's trees, woody vegetation that's growing in it. Woody vegetation, as it gets larger in these types of structures, tends, when in a rain event, is saturated, and those trees blow over and that, you have blowouts in the dams... the dams, you it destroys those. Um also, what we find is you create wetlands where triple E and some of the mosquito-borne viruses are created. So by creating these underground uh biotreatment systems, it's just like a leach field essentially.
Right.
Um that you are creating an area that gets is treating what it's supposed to be treating, not a place that harmful vegetation can grow and ruin the the biotreatment.
But leach fields fail.
But leach fields are putting in organic matter uh and uh carbons with it where this is not putting in carbons with it. You're putting in nitrogen in the water and it's nitrogen that we're trying to treat. And this and the pre-treatments that you have before that are what you take out your leaves and those types of materials so that you don't have carbon entering this bu- um uh sand filter. Uh so it's there's that big separation and then you have what we're having is these uh seven feet of rock that leaves and other things are not gonna get through either. So that's that's there's multiple layers that we'll be designing to prevent the sand from having those issues.
I just want to follow up, since you mentioned that the area in the back, who was supposed to be maintaining that?
It's it's the neighbors, it's the it's on um the property that the Fosses bought, but it's their easement for their pond. The butter over here, there's a there's a pipe right here that flows in off of the the butters parcel that um has that as part of their drainage system.
So they're supposed to maintain it, but you own it now?
Own the property and fee, they own the rights to have the drainage on it.
So who maintains it?
It's their treatment, so they should be maintaining it. I I haven't, I'm not, I say that, there's probably an agreement someplace that says who would maintain it. I have not read that, so just to be clear, I'm not trying to.
But maybe you can find it for us.
I definitely, we could definitely look that up.
Do we just approve that project? Is that part of the project that we just approved?
I don't know. Is the the new building, yeah, I don't know.
Because I mean, those conditions of approval are, you know, you maintain it and you it gets inspected every year and all that.
Well, this may have been done before we got smart enough and stormwater really became the problem that is today's.
It's only a couple of years.
Yeah, I think that was pretty, if it's part of that project, I don't know, but that's not really this.
That may be public.
Oh, there was.
It was a previous building that went with Savania.
Yeah, Savania had two and.
I would tell you that it's probably of that generation.
Probably older, yeah.
Would be maybe in the nineties that was built, if I'm not mistaken.
Yeah.
And it looks like when I've been out there.
Okay.
I haven't been out there in several months, but personally, but I don't know when we first get there. So. But that's a pretty regular occurrence, I would tell you, when I go around looking at projects that uh detention ponds, because whatever business they're in, they're usually not in the landscape business or the excavation business or any type of maintenance business. You know, they're making glass or they're selling whatever and that's why those aren't important to them as they should be. And that's why we try to make these types of systems, our office does, so that they are less maintenance uh required um in the long run.
I I just would comment, uh Hannaford, what's now Hannaford, when that came in, they did a lot of work cleaning up the back of that and restoring the back of that roof and also use the uh catch basins to help catch oil and soil and stuff like that in the parking lot, so. Uh and your illustration here on on.
The last page.
That page.
Yep.
Uh there is, it's just a dry well opening. Yeah, how how is, how do you see the water or or how would, let's start this way. Which way is the water running from the parking lot now and and the site, I would say for the most part? Does that go mostly into that existing pipe or?
It does not, so there's a ridge that runs right around about through here.
Oh, okay.
Of the site. Everything from here back flows to the back of the site.
Okay.
There is a couple catch basins, they're direct pipes that flow down the slope.
Okay.
Everything from this point forward flows out to the road and into the catch basin system that's out along the road that I could see. I haven't gotten into the.
We haven't got to that point yet.
You know, really to that depth yet, but um.
So obviously, the the concern of the board is that the you're improving the situation that uh oils and other debris that come off automobiles will be handled properly. Th- this is an interesting concept.
So as part of that.
Has U N H stormwater system done anything like this type of work? I know they got a lot of systems up there and haven't been there lately.
Yeah, no, this is the uh based on the U N H system.
So it's approved, yeah, okay.
This is um a combination of the, we do a lot of por- our office has a lot of porous pavement design. So it's a combination, like a hybrid of a porous pavement and a um bioretention system. But we're gonna have traditional pavement on top so that you don't have the maintenance issues of the silt's going through the the pavement itself. We're gonna have collection bait, you know, manholes and catch basins around the site, have probably have treatment within those catch basins.
Yeah.
And then have, that's why we have a deeper stone section underneath the parking lot so that we'll have room to run pipes from out in the middle of the lot down to this area and then be able to daylight them. The dry well very well may have a manhole cover on top of it. And if you could also see, it's perforated up here in the stone. It's solid through the treatment layer so that the no, so we could won't have as much bypass and then uh porous on the bottom. So this may be a series of more than one uh manhole where they're connected and they're next to each other and some of them will be, parts of them will be solid and some parts will be uh perforated so that we can have water collect, distribute in the same manhole and then not bypass through the sand and then be able to disperse again below that. So that's sort of the design we're we're working with.
Interesting.
And then on high flow and high flow where if you read the U N H data, excuse me, you're not as much, you're not as worried about um the quality because when you get to the high flow situations, it's the initial flush when you wash the pavement in that first quarter inch, maybe half inch of water.
Yeah.
That you get all your pollutants. After you get that first flow off and that goes starts working on the treatment, if the flow gets really, really fast and starts flowing a lot, you know, like a long day of rain, then you're not as worried about it because the pavement that you're washing has already been washed off.
Yeah.
And is in the treatment system and then that could possibly bypass to the lower level and then uh be stored in the lower level and then slowly released out. The larger culvert that we're good planning to put in underneath, we would most likely also perforate so that in a dry season, water that's coming down from Hannafords could then percolate out into these rocks and and work back into the groundwater so that we don't have just a solid pipe, once it gets in there, it's gonna just keep going. We're trying to make it so that we can have more infiltration and introduce more water back to the groundwater um that's uh instead of just flowing bypassing. So even in the swale that we have today, um this would slow the water going through that section. The swale you have today is channelized, so all that water is is channelized through. In this situation, the water will go out into the rock and the rock will help hold water, uh you know, along the ground surface and make it so that more water will flow back into and percolate into the into the ground. So we think that this will actually increase uh infiltration into the ground as well, better than just the the natural swell that's there today.
Other thoughts, questions?
I do, I'm gonna try to word this, so bear with me. So I the terminology, I'm not even sure I wrote it down correctly. So you would start out by saying it would help reduce the nitrogen, which is of course an issue we have in town.
I knew.
So will it make a difference if the state has you put, what'd you call it, a denitrogen?
Yeah, it will.
Channel, a chamber, right? Okay, so does is that chamber going to be necessary to reduce the nitrogen or would this process in and of itself without the chamber help reduce it?
Both will, one will help substantially even more.
Which one? The chamber?
The chamber.
Okay. Because that's that's important for the town as far as we don't wanna be putting nitrogen.
Is there's probably ninety percent chance the state's gonna make us vote that in. I don't know for for sure because we haven't even approached DES.
Okay, well, that's gonna be a big deal. I for me, I I think it is important to have that.
Reduce nitrogen.
Yes.
And um we just.
It's not that far from the where I think to get over across the road, which ends up in Great Bay, so yeah, we need to think.
So I've also gone, you discussed the behind Hannafords. I believe that was part of the DOT cleanup as well prior to Hannafords a little bit, a little bit of the reading I've done. Some of it might have been done with Hannafords. That's basically making a rock line swale, which is very similar to this, other than theirs is what they call gabions. Gabions is just chain link fence where they fill with rock and.
Did you say gamians?
Gabions.
Sorry, it's hard for me to hear with the fan in my ear. Um, thank you.
That's, it's just, it's a different system. Traditionally, DES today would say we don't want gabions because they don't like the look of them. Um in that area, if you go back and and go up and drive out to Hannafords, there's a little place where you can walk out on a platform and look down at it, so I'd encourage you all to do that. They have made sluice ways out of these gabions and so that the water is treated with the rock. Now, rock, when we do treatment, we're looking for bacteria to grow on surface area. If you think about a rock, there's no surface area within the rock. If you think about sand, there's a lot of surface area. So when as environmental engineers, we look at designing uh surface area to volume ratios and sand has a much higher surface area to volume ratio. And so that's why I think the system we are proposing is a much better system than what's upstream and what's there today. Is this a lot more area for bacteria to grow, remove harmful um other harmful uh things that are in the in the water. Uh there's some phosphorus removal, there's some nitrogen removal, it breaks down, like I said, hydrocarbons uh because bacteria digest that, they eat that and that's what you're trying to do by having a sand filter.
I'm curious if you explored other locations for the building that wouldn't require the wetland fill. Like, it seems like there's a large area to the north, um you know, closer to Portsmouth Avenue that.
On lot one ten.
Right?
Yeah, the whole, yeah.
So what, one ten, when you get your setbacks, there's really, it's not even close to what we need for space. I mean, just look at the footprint here and try to squeeze that in this. Part of the reason we we are looking at doing it down here was, sorry, I went the wrong way, is we were already proposing to put in a large retaining wall all along here and one of the things I said to Mr. Foss is if you're gonna put in a retaining wall, let's make it be part of the building because environmentally, pour extra concrete just doesn't make a lot of sense to pour a retaining wall to be able to use this space and then also pour a foundation wall. So in this case, retaining wall is gonna be on this side of the building because we're digging out that that other side and that's um instead of building a foundation wall, you know, whether it's all the way around this area or out into this area, um you you'd have to put in a retaining wall here anyways and we're using the building to do that um to try to use best.
Yeah.
You know, if you have to buy an extra thousand yards of concrete and extra thousand yards of concrete and those are added expenses in uh in the project and using natural resources.
So so you can't build it on the other piece of the property because of setbacks, but I mean, there's.
So there's setbacks all the way around here.
I mean, a setback can be, you can ask for variances and stuff on it. I mean, I think there's a lot of, there there's a lot of, you know, there's there's a desire along Portsmouth Avenue to maybe reduce the setbacks from the road, so I feel like that would sort of be an easy ask. It's a it's a line on a page. A wetland with over an acre of trees on it is a wetland with over an acre of trees on it. Like, to me, that's, I mean, you can build a sand filter and I get that you're removing the nitrogen and everything, but you're not replacing the habitat that you're removing. You're not replacing all of the other ecological and natural functions. So to me, to build on land that's already been cleared that maybe might help bring some vibrancy to Portsmouth Avenue rather than more, I mean, I know it's a dealership, but it's 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 a, to me, when people drive by it, it's a it's a giant parking lot. Like, I I I would personally rather see a building closer to Portsmouth Avenue and and keep the trees in the back.
One of the other things by designing it in this location, we're able to do the three stories. So this thirty-six thousand square feet of building that would have to be someplace else. So you would have to have another footprint equal to this to have that as well because that's part of the the beauty of doing it here is we have that whole basement level that is essentially becoming a first floor that you can't put your service area up another story, you know, or you, once you go to the out front, you don't have the the relief that you have with this design because of the slope that's here. So that's the other reason where it's important.
So that's a big, that's like a parking lot along the road, like there's just a.
Just as it is today.
Giant curb cut essentially.
This is all existing.
No, 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 along the Sylvan Road. Yeah.
Yep, well, this is the driveway as it is today.
Mm-hmm.
The uh Savania has an access easement to that. They will still be able to use that, so we don't have the right to do anything with that. Um the this parking lot was already approved, it is in place or partially in place, is completed. And then all we're doing is putting some parking spaces along the building.
So those parking spaces are on the basement level?
Correct.
Okay, that's something that I've been before.
Yeah, no, it is more difficult because without full run renderings of of the um the building, it's it's a little more difficult to to see, but those cost money and is the reason why we're here.
No, no.
For preliminary is to.
For conceptual.
Try to figure that out with what you guys would like and what we can live with and and need for uh Mr. Foster run the dealership.
But it's a it's essentially like a, whatever your length of building is, like two hundred foot long curb cut on your on that driveway.
Cor- correct.
Okay.
It's no different than the driveway that's gonna be on this side, you know, because there's all, it's gonna be, that's what businesses, you know, this is as, we'll have a loop road all the way around it with with storage, display, service, employees and clients, the customers coming in. So those are all the different things that you have at a dealership.
That you don't have currently, though. You're gonna be adding more traffic onto the GTE road, correct? You're gonna be adding more traffic onto the G T E road, correct?
But the G, like, like those parking spaces on the G T E road, like, if, if, even if you're just using them internally, you're still backing out onto the G T E road. You're kind of taking that whole frontage of the G T E road.
Parts of it.
It's gonna look, G T E road is gonna turn into a parking lot, yeah.
It won't look like a stream.
It's an extra wide road as well. It's, I would tell you that it's probably thirty-two to thirty-five feet wide.
That's for the tractor, the bigger tractor trailers go in there, though, so it's needed?
Yup.
Okay. Where are the employees parking right now, if I could ask that question? Because when we approved the parking lot on the other side of the road, it was for employee parking, cause they were parking on the side of G T E. But now, we're talking about needing more employee parking?
Of course, this is a much larger dealership. I mean, just going from twelve bays to thirty bays?
Yeah, so I, my question was, are the employees parking in that approved parking lot right now? That's where they're parking, right?
Today, you're talking about?
Yes, yes.
I don't know where.
So, we're parking, the, the not parking on the side of G T is?
No, some, you know, I answered, some do, and.
Okay. Right, because that was something that we had talked about when that was approved. Okay, thank you for clarifying that, I appreciate it. Thank you. Uh, it's just, we're trying to not add confusion and dangerous situations, at least that's my viewpoint on that one.
Cause they're the only parking back.
Yeah, yeah, but you remember the conversation we had, and you needed that parking, cause they were on the side of the road. They weren't gonna park on the side of the road anymore. So, they're still doing it?
In a perfect world.
It.
I just, you know, in a perfect world, Sylvania would come out and exit out the Holland Way and the driveway that's out there.
Okay, it's still two-way.
But it's, it's not there yet.
Okay.
And I think the Fosses would do just about anything to, to make that be the safer direction for them to travel and park and come in and out of. Um, but we, with a D D easement, we have to plan on them still going through.
Yeah, absolutely.
This way.
Yes, hence my questions.
I understand, I'm just trying to make it clear that.
It's a reason for them.
It's not, the Fosses, um, hope to have that as a Sylvania driveway. But that's not the way it is.
Well, it.
Can't be changed.
It's, it's a road for that, right? So, we're, my, my reason for asking this is, we already addressed people parking, or thought we did, right? And now, we're talking about maybe backing out into it, so we're adding that? And that's still a two-way road, driveway, you, we can call it whatever we want, but it's still two ways, so.
I, I would assume that during the approval process, we'll be looking at that with traffic engineers associated with the process, and, and, uh, we look forward to clarifying and, and working with the board.
That's why we're having this meeting, so we can talk about potential issues now, so you're, we're prepared.
Well, that exists up at, uh, F W Web. It's a new road, and customers come in just like that, back out, and it, it's not as busy a road as this is.
Right, it's still something I'd like to explore.
Yeah, I'm, I have to say, we do have a situation like that in town, is what I'm saying, yeah.
Okay.
A source.
Yeah.
I would say that, um, my observations of that driveway is there's certain times that it's busy, and is, most of the time, it's not busy, is what I've seen when I've been there. Um, so, I don't know the hours of operations, I, you know, I couldn't tell you that directly, and, um, know what time those vehicles are entering their shift hours. I don't know if it's eight to two, or, you know, whatever hours.
There are a few businesses out there that have different shift hours, so, yeah, it's, it's.
But I think there's only one that has an easement to this, is my understanding.
So, there's only one business there that can actually come in?
The other one has their own access, under Holland Way.
Oh, on Holland Way, yeah, I see that.
So.
It's actually, is there one or two? Um, okay, thank you.
Is, is the basement gonna be used for stories, in lieu of the building you wanted to build?
The building we wanted to do is part storage on the other property.
Yeah.
So, this is gonna have, in the basement of this, part storage, um, we put the cleaning bays under there, for the conditioning, washing cars, uh, and then, yes, the rest of it will all be for the car storage.
So, you solved that problem?
That would solve the problem.
So, there will be an access door somewhere off the roadway to, to wash the vehicles or whatever?
Yeah, absolutely.
Well, and, and an access door for the storage place, too.
Right, the big doors and things, yeah.
I believe there's a door right in here.
Oh, I see, okay, yup.
And that accessway has, uh, I'd tell you, close to forty feet before it gets to the road. So, there's a queuing space before you could get.
Thank you. I, I don't know how long is a tractor trailer that would be dropping things off? Is it forty feet?
Oh, the, this is not parts delivery down here. This is for, um, working on recon and getting into the storage area. So, if you had a car coming down, and you wanted to bring it inside, I'm saying there's a queuing space there.
Okay.
That you aren't backing out into the road, because if you look at these parking spaces, they're approximately twenty feet wide, right there. And it's quite a bit more than two of those spaces.
Yeah.
Out to the, out to the road, or the driveway. So, that's, that's what, um, we were anticipating, is that that would be a bigger area for that, where those vehicles would enter, and, and.
Are, are the number of parking spaces you're showing, are they to meet parking requirements, or are they to meet your needs?
The parking spaces shown are just the ones with the lines. Those are just to meet the needs of, um, the service bays, the clientele, and the employees.
Are they, are they more than the required parking spaces?
I couldn't tell you that off the top of my head, I'm, I'm sorry, I don't, I don't wanna give you an answer that I don't know is a hundred percent the truth. I think that we have approximately two for every bay. I think we had, it was about a hundred and ten parking spots, I think it was, for the employees, uh, clients, or customers, and service area.
Right.
Well, you have parking spaces for display vehicles, it's just not.
Those are, those are the undelineated spaces.
Undelineated, yeah.
Because I've done enough car dealerships that on Saturdays, they wanna aim them to the east, and Sundays, they wanna aim them to the west.
Yes.
You know, and whatever day, you know?
Yeah.
Whatever the manager wants that day, they're gonna turn them slightly to give it a little flair, and.
So.
We try to show areas where the vehicles will be parked, and show aisleways, so that we know that we can get through, uh, safely, um, between those.
Yup.
And that's just how I design car dealerships at this point, because, um, I think we can paint as many lines as we want, they're not gonna be in the lines, and it's more important that you show areas that they'll be in.
You're gonna, you're gonna show us where you put the snow, right?
We are. Nope, that was one of the conservation commission's, uh, comments on that. Currently, there's, uh, some large areas of snow here and up here, that are, that, um, the dealership puts snow. Um, we can also store snow in this storage area as well, and, um, if not, they would have to pay to truck it offsite, which we would, um, put on the plan as a note, or we would anticipate we'd put on the plan. For the last several winters, there hasn't been a lot of snow, so, um, there's different thought processes on whether that's gonna continue or not, and, but, we, uh, we definitely anticipate adding notes and, and dealing with that.
What are you thinking for landscaping?
We have not anticipated landscaping at all at this point, we haven't even.
Will there be landscaping? Are you hiring a landscape architect to do a design?
I would assume that's part of our process.
Okay.
We just, uh, have not gotten there at all.
Yeah, I, I highly recommend it, with the amount of vegetation that's being removed, being proposed to be removed, to come up with a plan for how to do a nice landscaping plan that's gonna make this, uh, green up the space significantly more than it is.
Are you ready? Got questions, thoughts, suggestions?
Taking all of this in, and I, I have to say that, um, I think everything Jen has said, I have been thinking, and, and I'm concerned about, um, from the positioning of the building, you've got like over twenty thousand feet of, uh, wetland impact. I'm concerned about the removal of vegetation to extend the building. Um, I'd like to see the building, um, we always try to get the building to be what is closest to a road. It has more visibility than a parking lot, it's just more appealing. Um, and I think for a showroom, I think that would be a plus for the, for the dealership. I, and I understand your reasoning, I mean, this is a tough, you've got very limited space, and, um, obviously, huge needs for a growing business, successful business. When you were first talking about, um, doing work on the building, adding to the building, I was thinking, gosh, you know, it might be, you know, instead of putting in a, a million-dollar, uh, treatment system, if you could use, use that million dollars to put your cars, store them on someone else's lot while you're doing all this work, and then bring them back, you might, maybe that would be a cost-efficient way. And I don't begin to know how, how all that works, but, um, there are just a lot of features that trouble me with this, and, and I don't have the solutions, but I'm, I'm very much, uh, echoing what Jen has said, and including her last comment about landscaping, because this is gonna be, it's gonna be a heat desert. It's gonna be, it's gonna be a lot of pavement.
You, you've also proposed parking on the third floor or on the roof?
Not on the roof, inside the building, the, the third story.
Okay, so there's a full third story?
It's a partial third story, it's in the front portion of the building. So, this area here will be a third story on it.
And there's a showroom?
Partially is showroom, partially is offices.
Uh, uh, I, I talked to Dave about this a month ago or more, but, um, I lived, I lived in Tampa, Florida for ten years, and they had started to build car dealerships with parking garages above them for this reason, and they worked pretty well. And I, so I always thought at the time, wouldn't that be nice when it snowed in New England? I know what you have to do, when you have to move three-hundred cars to get your lots clear, but.
You could install one of those endless big car sale.
Machines to carve on.
Take your choice.
One of, one of, there's two things. And I started off by trying to tell you that the Fosses have connections and roots to their farm here.
Yeah.
That they wanna stay here, and the others, they really would like to stay in town. And there's not a lot of other places in town that is commercial, that they have, could have access to. And so, um, additionally, corporations, and I haven't talked to Tim about this at all, but, is it Daimler Chrysler that is possible, or? Stellantis, isn't it now? I'm sorry, I'm behind the times. Um, is going to tell them where they have to stay within. So, because I've dealt with a lot of the dealerships in Stratum, and, and in several other towns, it's not as if you could have a lot of opportunity to, to, where you can go. There is, so, if, if you tell them they can't be here, I really don't know of another site that Stellantis would, would allow them to move to. It's, you know, there's none, no other sites that I know of in Exeter. Um, unless you're gonna tear down Hanafords and buy Hanafords, which, then you're dealing with a lease with the King family that, you know.
Million bucks a year.
Right. You know, so, that's, that's the hardship they have to try to stay in town.
Yeah.
Well, I think, I think everyone here wants them to stay.
I, I understand, I'm just, just talking about it, because it's, it's not something that they take lightly. I mean, they'd rather have just a flat site that they can go strip the topsoil on, and, and put a, put a, some pavement down, and, and put in a new building and, and go, cause it's not gonna be an easy nine months, as I just heard, um, to do this process either. Um, but, that's, that balance is what we've been, we've been working on for several months now, probably six months or more, trying to.
Figure it out.
Eliminate other options, as viable or not viable, and, and, uh, this is what we've come up with. And there's been several iterations of these plans, and, uh, that's why we're here now, is cause we think this is the best one.
Could, is there a way of keeping your third floor, but still pushing the built, just sliding the building towards, as, as it's laid out, sliding it closer to, uh, what's the town?
Well, you, what's hard is, is the, the display is their, their business.
Yeah.
So, you need to have enough display out front, and we've put in a double row of parking for clientele out front, which you probably, when we go to final design, would, would be moved someplace else, because you wouldn't even want the double row of parking there. Um, that was just our initial, let's get something on paper for parking, and we haven't, we haven't gone through that whole design yet, but.
I mean, it just seems like you've got a lot of display area, you know, heading above that, if you move the building out.
So, I'm just gonna approach this and just sort of tell you the way I look at this. This, um, this grade is lower here, and goes up towards the dealership.
Yup.
When I design dealerships, I, I put a double stack up front along the road always. This way, you're looking at the front end of the car, not the tail end of the car. From this side, you pull into the dealership, you're looking at the front end from this side. The second row is up a little higher, you're looking at the front end of that, so that's how you're displaying this. I grew up in a family with retail businesses, and, along with milking cows. Um, that's what you're always trying to do, is you're always trying to display your product. And it's no different than when my brother was displaying bark balts or plants, or going inside the Agway store, when we would, would try to, what they call shelving, uh, when you push everything to the front of the shelf, so that everybody can see their product. So, it's really, the corporations also push that as what they are approved to build, because they don't only have to go to you to build this, and the state to build this, they have to go to their corporate to get sign off as, as well. So, it's, they're squeezed in the middle, trying to make all of you happy, and trying to make corporation happy. Um, it's a very difficult process, spot to be in, and so, uh, it's just.
Someone who's driving down Portsmouth Avenue sees that car parked up front, not the one inside the window.
Correct.
Is what you're saying.
That car and the seventy other cars that are also parked in front.
You see them.
It's a lot of frontage on this lot.
With trees in between them.
Yeah, right.
Now, you mentioned you were going to possibly move the customer parking.
Yeah. This row right here is what I was thinking. You might put displays there also, and this parking would be relocated somewhere else on the site. Um, all we did was try to get the number of spaces around the building and the proximity of what we believe we need for this. Like I said, we haven't done full design, so this row, and I can't read it on that plan, is fifteen parking spots.
There's a point, there's a pointer, I think it's on the podium, and you can, you, you have it, okay.
Yeah, I'm just saying, I couldn't read it. Yeah, I'm just saying, I couldn't read it.
No, I just wanted to try to make it easier for you so you didn't have to go back and forth.
I just like to, to show you exactly.
Sure.
Where it is. But that is, those 15 spaces, in my mind, as designing this, I would move those. I haven't talked to Tim about that at all, so he may love them there, so they may stay. But that's what I see on this design, that those 15 spots, I would probably move.
Just as... But you wouldn't consider moving the building into those 15 spots?
I think that's where you'd want more display there, personally. That's what... I mean, that's the reason why I'd move, is for display, not...
Not to move the building?
Not, I mean, that's what, I can tell you what's corporation's gonna tell me.
Well, we have the Volvo dealership here and they dictate what size bushes, which are, you can only put something like this.
What type of siding, what color paints?
It's all dictated.
What, what type of sign, how much you're gonna pay rent on that sign for the rest of your life. It's amazing. I mean, I haven't talked to Tim about his operation. I just, I've done a dozen or 20 of these around the state and I just know what I've dealt with in the past. So it's, it's a tall tale. It's a tall order.
Just to make sure I'm clear, the top of the proposed building will be one story above the top of the existing building. Is that true?
No. The existing building has two stories?
In the back, right?
Right here. This part of the building already has two stories. There's upstairs offices.
So in other words, the top of the proposed building will be no higher than the top of the...
I can't say exactly. In stories from the pavement, it's still two stories.
Okay.
I would suggest that it's probably gonna be a little taller, just because of modern construction. Usually, the showrooms are a little higher. One of the reasons there's issues here is because parts of this aren't tall enough to put cars on a full lift in the service bays. So there's only certain bays they can put certain vehicles on. And that's another limit of operation.
Why does it come out crunched a little, huh?
Yes. You're gonna make it rain in the bay because you poked holes in and you're buying a car. So that's what they're trying to deal with, to make this a more modern dealership. When Tim's grandfather built it originally, the cars were a different shape. You didn't have as many SUVs. The trucks were much lower to the ground. And it's all people, I always say, car engineers have never put bale of hay in the back of a truck.
Right.
Because if you've ever had to throw hay in the back of a truck, you much prefer to do a 1970's truck than any other trucks you see today. So vehicles are just bigger.
Yeah.
And that's, that's another hurdle, talking about height of the building itself.
I, just for my own information, I want to go back to the drainage picture, the detailed stormwater treatment section.
I'm headed back there. I can zoom in probably with the...
The picture doesn't show any influx of runoff into the, into the filter. It's not gonna get into the filters through the drywell. It's not gonna get into the filters through the, through the car top. So how's it gonna get into the filter?
There'll be a distribution system within the, within the stone area. So as I said, there'll be multiple catch basins and drywells. They will have a pipe system that will bring it to the stone area on the top. That stone area will have a distribution system so that the water will be throughout the upper stone, so that the water can flow into that. And then it'll drain down through this bioretention soils mix and then work its way down.
I'm curious, why is the, the pipe at the bottom, the shape that it is, why isn't it just a standard oval, a circular pipe?
I'm sure this is done in exaggerated scale because it's similar to when you look at road cross-sections. Vertical is different than horizontal. So if we did this, and this, this is, let's say 100 feet wide, and this is only 20 feet deep, it would all blend together. So the way we do that is we exaggerate, usually by a scale of five, the vertical scales. We stretch it out vertically.
So it is gonna be a circular pipe?
It is a circular pipe. I'm sorry, I've turned along a way. Technically, that's why it's...
And how, how large is that compared to the culvert that it's going to attach to?
I believe we've matched the size. Other than this, we were planning would be a perforated pipe versus the existing pipe is not. So let that water flow out, you know, all along in the stone area. So it can work as a distribution and it can work as a collection after the water has receded.
So this, this project also has an approved plan already for that parking lot on the south portion of the parcel, right?
Correct.
I feel like it would be helpful when reviewing the plans to see that plan on the plans as opposed to just what's existing today.
It would be interesting to know how many, how many spaces are in that area.
Yeah.
I mean, you've mentioned you've got 120 spaces...
That's not the plan. That's just an outline.
In the, in the drawings that we saw, but I don't know how many parking places are in that.
There's striping.
Lot across the road.
Did they pay it yet?
No.
I don't think so.
Okay. We would assume that we're doing existing conditions on the whole site. Most likely, we're gonna have to do lot line adjustments or lot line eliminations to do this because this building would also straddle property lines. So we would have to make these two lots, one lot, as part of this project because of that. That's all part of the bigger picture of where we're going. We, I'm sorry, I mentioned it earlier, but that would be part of...
Has to be, yeah.
Be part of this project. There's a lot of details.
That's not uncommon.
Yeah.
Got a lot more to it. So that would be part of it. As you can see here, the drain pipe is underneath the building itself. Because that's where the wetlands were. When we, originally when we're looking at this, we were gonna come all the way out into the sweatlands with the addition, when we were trying to do just an addition as well. And that's part of the reason, you know, unfortunately, the wetlands most likely were gonna be touched, whether we just tried to do an addition or do a building that's gonna be more user friendly from this century versus something that's 70, approximately 70 years old. 60, 63 years old, sorry. 62 years old. So...
So what you're saying is your plans will show the entire site, the lot line adjustment?
Absolutely.
Any proposed changes to that parking below?
Absolutely. No, it's, because it's gonna be part of our site.
Yeah.
Anything else? Do you have any other questions?
How many cars do you project, I mean, on the completed property?
Sam, can you use your microphone, please, so that our viewers at home can throw popcorn at you?
How many cars do you project to have on the site for sale?
For sale?
For sale, in the...
My post is 400.
The lower lot had approved for approximately 145 parking spots. Is what I call the Beals lot, because the Beals plan had that, designed that. And can I take it back? I had said 110 earlier. There's 150 marked spots. I'm sorry, I just pulled out the numbers, the actual numbers. And we were looking at about 400 or a little more in the upper lot around the dealership itself.
I'm confused.
Yeah. Is it 400 total or 400 in the upper lot?
400 in the upper lot and 145 in the lower lot.
So the total number's 545 between the two?
Between the two. Yeah.
Clearly, those numbers are, includes your display.
Correct. That's the display numbers. Is that, I thought that's what you were asking?
It is.
Yeah.
Well, I guess...
That is the display numbers as well.
That is, yeah. And the, the separate lots that you've shown here, parking places...
There's 150 that I talked about for customers, service, and employees.
I'm sorry, 150 or 110?
I just said, I'm sorry, that I misspoken.
Oh, okay.
Pulled out the numbers on something that was big enough print for me to read in my old eyes.
Got it.
Sorry, I'm getting to that age.
Really?
It's 100 and...
So that means you have 60 for the bays, because you said you have, you planned on two per bay. So that would be 60 for your bays and that leaves you 90?
We figured that there was gonna be around 50 employees, 45, 50 employees.
Okay. And that leaves 40 for?
For customers. We will do a full analysis on this and bring it back to you when we do our, you know, final analysis and final numbers. But that was just our initial sketch. Like I said, we haven't done a landscape plan. We haven't done our drainage design. All those things affect parking. We haven't designed snow storage. And this is just a schematic with a lot more design done by Jewett on the building itself, because we have to design what we need for a building first and then try to design around that with the site, with the, with the site in mind. I mean, the reason we have this three stories is because of the grades on this, on the south side of the building. And like I said, the retaining walls, trying to not just have a retaining wall that's out in the middle of nowhere that's really serving no purpose. The retaining wall is holding up the building and working as a retaining wall in this type of situation.
So do you have drawings of the building, like what it'll actually look like?
Absolutely. When we come back to you, we're gonna have all that.
Yeah, that'd be great.
It's just not full design at this point.
Yeah, yeah.
Or even more complete design than we have today.
Would you use solar panels for...
Okay.
Is that something that you're thinking about? Just curious. I'm not...
Yeah.
Just curious.
It would be hard.
The last couple of projects had, including rural woods, had nice glossy photos of the finished product with the landscaping, and that's a big help. We can see what it's gonna look like.
Visual would be appreciated.
The news is, I had a new engineer start today and he's done some of that before. On Monday, he started, so can try to help out and work with Jewett on that as well.
Okay, I think we'd like to make a motion, but...
To what?
Close this discussion.
We're all set.
Right under your fingers.
Oh, okay. This is have to read, okay?
Dave's note.
Okay, yeah, then I will, I'll move that the design review application for Foss Motors...
No, I think you want to do the first one.
First one, first one.
Excuse me. I was tabling into...
No, it's where...
I move that the design review process for Foss Motors, I think what case number 24-4 has concluded and instruct the town planner to, what does it say, notify the applicant in writing according to New Hampshire RSA 678.
676.
76, you're right.
Second.
I'll have my issue still.
Yeah, I think your hand vote's okay on this one.
Sure.
Those in favor, pull up your hand, please. Thank you. You may ask vote. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you very much.
Coming tonight?
Congratulations on your...
Sounds like an exciting project. And we'd like to have Foss Motors in Exeter, by the way.
So the pointer I was telling you about is the red light?
Yeah, no, I was using it earlier.
Okay.
Thank you, Bruce.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Good night.
Cheaters, but I probably have to have reading glasses.
Okay, we have some minutes to look at in a minute.
I have to refuse.
That's great.
And let's see, one is for...
April 24th?
April 24th. So, any comments?
I thought they looked great.
I thought they were good too, but it's been so long. I was through them again today, but I, they...
I have one.
Yes.
And, because, because I was speaking from the public, but seeing that...
That's okay.
It is what I said, so I just want to get that straight. On, let's see, page seven, row 303, it should say, with 12,000 vehicles per day and 1,500 vehicles per hour in the afternoon.
Okay. And 1,500 per hour?
Yes.
In the afternoon?
In the afternoon. 1,500 vehicles per hour in the afternoon.
And you're not married today, right?
I'm married, yeah. We're getting better at that. Although I should say also on line 299...
299.
299. Wiley Creek is two L's, not one. My address, 7 Wiley Creek. It's W-I-L-L-E-Y.
I, I had a couple minor ones. And let me know if minor corrections are not really... I, I had a couple minor ones, and, let me know if minor corrections are not really needed or wanted, I mean, but anyway, on page sixty-eight, I mean, on page two, line sixty-eight, I would add, noted that underground detention would cause a real mess, just to make it a little clearer, I think, in what they're saying. And in line seventy-five, I would add, under the two-year storm, and, under the threshold, I think is what is meant.
Change deed under, okay.
Was it, was it actually said, or you just think that was what was meant?
I don't know what was actually said, so there, that's the question I really have.
We have to be careful.
Am I supposed to make corrections that are kind of, just make the, what I think make the notes more clear, but I don't know what was actually said, I mean...
Well, as far as I'm concerned, technically, it's what was said, that can be corrected.
I have, I should go back.
We can't change, we can't add or modify something that wasn't actually said.
All right.
That's my understanding, anyone else can weigh in, but, yeah.
I will, in the future, go back and look at what was said, and if I wanna make any corrections, I'll do, put that in mind. All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
I appreciate the, the guidance.
Yeah, absolutely, it's because if anything ever happens down the road, these can be used in a court or whatever, so we really wanna make sure that... Yeah.
Oh, but this is, this is a point of, of questioning. On page three...
Page three.
Line one twenty-four. It says the foundation is not essentially the retaining wall. That really what was said? I thought the foundation was the retaining wall.
Yeah, just like we had tonight, we've had two retaining walls being the foundation.
But, I, I didn't go back and read what was, I mean, listen to what was really said, so...
Which line?
Maybe we could put a question mark?
At line one twenty-four.
Foundation is not essentially the retaining wall.
Yeah, but it is essentially, I think, I, I thought it was.
I, I can't remember what was actually said, so, we can table...
Daniel, check it.
Yeah, just have Daniel check it, right.
Yeah.
Motion to accept as noted?
So before we do that, could I ask a technical question?
Sure.
I recuse for part of that. So should I abstain, or am I okay to vote on? It's a good question, I hope. You know what, just to be honest, I say, I'm gonna abstain, because, from both.
If we have enough votes...
Yeah, I'm good, yeah. Thank you.
I mean, accepted Marty's comments.
Yeah, I know, it's just a little different reasoning.
But he was at least here.
But I said it.
He was here.
He picked something he said, so I'm just gonna abstain, better air in the South Park.
Yeah, okay.
Thank you.
But...
So...
Mr. Chair, do you want a motion?
Sure.
Okay, I move that we accept the minutes from April twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-five, with the changes as noted.
Second.
Okay, move to seconded?
Do we want to add...
Those in favor, indicate by saying aye.
I, I have a question.
Question.
Do we wanna add to the motion about the question that I raised about is it, is not the proper...
I can add that.
Aren't, aren't we gonna ask somebody about that?
We're gonna have Dan, Dan, check it.
I think she said as noted, which means all the comments...
Would have been that.
Yeah.
Including that one, is addressed, so basically, Daniel will go back and make all the changes that were mentioned, including, he'll check yours.
Okay. Yeah.
That'd be it, that way.
Yep. So, I guess we'll do a hand vote, so, no, I was knowing your voice, those in favor, indicate by saying aye.
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 On ayes, abstentions?
Aye.
One.
I'll abstain as well, two, all right?
One, two.
I don't wanna get in trouble.
The guys can actually vote on the minutes, even though you weren't here.
They still carry.
Not tonight, but if you were a, active, it's kinda silly, but you can do that.
Let's see. June twelfth. Notes of June twelfth, that was our previous meeting. My comments before we get into that is, is... The conditions by which this is approved, I don't think they quite are the same as would be on the tape, or in the same order, I think there's a little confusion that Barbara, the, needs to be reviewed, and/or Aaron should be here, so I would suggest we table these minutes. I'm just not comfortable otherwise.
Okay.
For accuracy, yeah.
Do we have to move?
So, motion, please?
Mr. Chair, I move that we table the minutes of June twelfth, twenty twenty-five, until the contents can be reviewed and, for accuracy.
Yeah, oh good. Is there a second?
Second, second.
Please indicate by saying aye.
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 Pos, tensions?
Aye.
Sabbath, thank you.
I did abstain.
Oh, let's see, I don't mind anything else hot on the agenda tonight.
Yes.
Just the planned discussion, land use regulations, field modifications, I don't know of any other.
How about our clerk?
Yeah, we have to do that, and I did, and I did get an answer on a question about the clerk, I was asked, or we were talking about whether an alternate could be appointed as clerk, and the answer's no. It has to be a full number.
Oh, we do have a, elect a clerk this evening.
We waited for you to come back.
We knew you wouldn't wanna be shying-eyed, you know, the seat, would you be willing to serve in that capacity?
Sure.
I want a motion, Jen.
I move to reappoint, are we appointing, electing?
No, we heart, we're, we're electing them, they're not, they're the chair.
I hope, I vote to reelect John Gruder as the clerk of the planning board for next year.
I'll second.
Second, those in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 So be it, thank you, John.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Really, thank you.
So, I would just like to make a brief comment about our town planner, he's on leave now for several weeks, and I've told him that that's his job to take care of himself first.
Absolutely.
That he's fortunate that Exeter has a well-formed, clear-minded planning board, and that we can handle what we need to handle. And I've talked with Barbara, she pointed out, in August is when we do the CIP, the Capital Improvement Plan, and a lot of that work is done, doing now and then. They're pretty familiar with that process, I said if she needs some help, let us know, so I think we're, we're in good shape. And if I move anything else, I'd say so, but you might send a card to Dave, a concurrence man. And, I had a nice conversation with Pete about a week or so ago, he's finally, now that he, he's comfortable, now that we have some good ordinance, stepped down, he didn't realize his term went to twenty-seven. And, I would suggest anybody have time to go up and see Pete, he'd enjoy it, he really, he's by himself, he can't go, not, well...
His wife.
Nancy's there, too, but, he's doing things, he's on a committee there, you know, but we just had a nice chat, and I think that's the kinda thing that the person in his position, he's sharp, you know, might, might, might do that.
And a nice guy.
Very nice guy, and, yeah.
So, you know...
And he's missed.
Yep. So with that, did he got a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Okay.
I can just...
Second?
Second.
Don't do it, okay, we sent the adjourns.
All right.
Thank you so much.
Thank you for tuning into Exeter TV. Exeter TV is the town's public and government access channels, available on Comcast Channels Six and Twenty-two. Channel Six is your channel. If you have an idea for a program, want to host your own talk show, or submit a film, we're here to get your content on television. On Channel Twenty-two, we bring you live and replay coverage of government meetings and other town updates. A third channel, Blue Hawk Media, is operated by S.A.U. sixteen, and can be found on Channel Eight, with all your school sports, events, and meetings. You can watch Exeter TV online at exeternh.tv, Apple TV, and on Roku. Find us on social media for extra content. Subscribe to our YouTube channel and hit the bell to get notified about live streams and new content. Tune into our platforms every other Friday to watch the Exeter Bi-Weekly Report, with recaps of recent events, updates from town departments, and messages from nonprofits in your area. If you head to our website, exeternh.tv, we invite you to sign up to our newsletter to receive monthly updates about new content, upcoming meetings, and more. We'd like to thank you for taking the time to watch Exeter TV, and hope that you tune into our other content as well.